It's a good color for you.
Still works?
Good evening, everybody. Sorry, I didn't follow that rule is. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to remind the board members. When you have common when you're speaking, could you please lead into the mic if it's not too close to you? So not only the people in the room can hear it while it's being recorded. All members present with the exception of Timmy Lynn, he's been excused. Purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg area school district. Public comment is welcome and issues refer to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes, which will be available by contact in the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other devices. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move past messages and communications unless a board member has a question. Anyone from three point one through three point three? Brings us to our citizen participation. Al. Thank you, President Hesimer, and good evening, everyone. We have one person that is asked to address the board tonight. Mike Hosen. Mike Mosher. Sorry if I butchered your last name. Yeah, yeah, so if you could come up and just speak into the mic and just because we're being recorded also. Thank you.
I guess my big thing was just clarification with where the school is heading. I hear we're going to an independent next year as far as athletics go. And I was wondering how that pertains to having a seventh and eighth grade middle school program in football. Because currently, we've tried that and to no avail those kids are playing night cricket ball. Just clarification on how that's going to happen or what's going to go on.
Typically, we don't engage back and forth of comments or statements, but I will clarify. In prior meetings, years ago, the board allocated funds for a middle school program that never materialized. Those funds have been reallocated. So I believe if the athletic director was here tonight, the stance is there is no, there is not a middle school football program per se.
Okay, because I was just concerned questions I'm getting from that age group with apparently they've been told that there's a middle school program.
I mean, I can, Jason, we can get that. I know we currently do not have a middle school program where it's established. I think, and I don't want to put words into your mouth or step out of my way to travel. The confusion may be coming, may be come from seventh and eighth graders going up to the ninth grade programs possibly.
Because there is no seventh and eighth grade program in the middle path.
Correct. And to my knowledge, again, I don't want to speak over Casey personally. My understanding from a board perspective, there is not a sanctioned Gettysburg school district seventh grade or middle school program.
Thank you.
I think what we could do is we could request clarification from Casey.
If you think his email address, Casey could email him.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Dave, could you give his email address? Could you give his email address so we can get back to him?
That brings us to our next agenda item, number five, routine approvals. Five point one through five point five, may I have a motion? Wait a second. Second question.
I have some questions about the financial report. And actually, for everybody who doesn't know, I did email Belinda M. Jason. And I did get some answers regarding the questions that I brought up. Some of them were about, specifically, there was a line item there from the sprinklers and it did say change order for $230,000. And it was clarified that there was a change order for $3,464.32 from the up close part of the original contract. And it was not. It didn't show that way on the summary. And I did question about on the P cards issued this month, there was $123,000 for the P card purchases. And I understand that we're not trying to micromanage people here. And I don't want to, I don't want to say that I'm a micromanage people. But we're coming into budget season and I need some people to start ringing in some money. Because, and I'm not saying that there's anything that varies going on. But that's a lot of money that's being spent. And there's purchases on there for Dunkin' Donuts and for pizza and for Panera. And I get that it's professional development, I understand that. But we got to run it in because I'm not happy about it and I have constituents that are not happy about it. So I'm sorry to hear about it.
I appreciate you asking the questions. Treasure, I try to go over everything. Belinda's really helpful with answering any questions that I know I've had. But I did not get the answer to the question until after 6:00 PM. And I don't know that that is enough time for me to properly read over, and it was lengthy, properly read over all the questions. But then I certainly didn't have time to ask any questions, but I did have questions. But again, I'd like to give a little bit more time to that and I didn't have it. So I wanted to make sure that I can read back the rest to you.
Belinda, just for clarification. The expenditures, I want to make sure we're right category here. The expenditures on the financial report go through the audit of your force, correct? Every expenditure. So what it comes down to, if I'm not going to speak for Michelle, is it's not, it's not that somebody's doing something they shouldn't be doing with the money. It's where money is being spent and how it could be spent. I don't want to speak for you, but I think that's what you said.
Yes. Like, I, I mean, I just rang it in. That's, I mean, that's a lot of expenses. And I, and I, I mean, I'm the one being the one who's like, whatever, $10,000 in Amazon. And I get that there's things that you can buy at Amazon that we didn't see. I understand that, I don't have a problem with that. But that's a lot of expenses.
Just to respond to that, because Amazon's one of the pure money disasters.
Right, now, and I understand that. I'm just saying, it just looks like, it looks bad to the public when they're looking at. And I understand, there's not a whole lot of people that look at our financial statement. But the ones that do are looking at it going, what in the world is this for? And I have to answer to those people.
I mean, Amazon, I think it's just one of those places where it's an APR and you're like, oh, okay, that's for plumbing. Or if it was trystic, that's for, but when it's Amazon, it could be anything on the plant. So when you just see some for Amazon, you're thinking it could be anything. So your mind kind of wanders because you have no idea exactly what it was. And I get the point with the change order. And I get the explanation that, hey, but when you look at a financial report and it just says change order, you're like, wait a minute. See what I'm saying? Because it doesn't show the whole lengthy sentence that goes along with each line up. Yeah, well, I'll go along and I get that. That's, I think that's why the question was asked because there's no way for you to break down and fake every single thing.
Well, and this report is provided in summary. So we have detailed reports, but I don't tell you who's able to see the detail. I mean, you're not allowed to see that. It's just in terms of approving at a level and level, the summary is typically what is provided.
Yeah.
Now, one of the things with the software, it only allows so much space to give in the detail. So if it happened to be one of the other change orders, one of the others in this particular school's contract, it was going to pick up the first thing available and what was there. There's, at this point, there's no way to pull away that as it is. Because you have ten items and only one summary. And it's going to pick up one or two things that have to stay in school. I have not heard of any changes to the software yet, and I'm not just going to do something here for it. But until then, that's going to never occur unless there's, I mean, only the manipulation that the legislature does.
Yeah, and I don't think it's anything, I don't think the questions are anything related to you. When you see something like that, you kind of just throw it off because you don't know the whole explanation. And that's why you get the question, I don't think it was anything. Because if we thought it was just a change order, you'd be like, well, that's quarter their whole entire project. That would be extraordinary. You know what I mean?
And so change order, change order is a full or certain amount will come before the school board's approval. Change orders are in a certain amount automatically reported. It doesn't mean to say that there are many people not looking at those. Because we all don't want surprises for change orders that they need. And they're misunderstanding why and what they're for. But in terms of the, you know, just the general synopsis, and I appreciate the questions, but it means it's those which are looking at the report. And you can see that until Monday and in course through several meetings, my first opportunity to reply was the time that she received it. But in general, I'm looking at P card reports, typically they're broken down by general fund first, which is fund ten. Let's see, general fund first, then we go to fund thirty-two, which is the capital endeavor. Fund thirty-nine, which is the capital project. And we have the food service, which is fund fifty-one. And lastly is fund eighty-one, which is the student activities. Some of the items I know that was mentioned, like for example Dunkin' Donuts, those are in the student activities. So of course, just so the board understands that student activities underneath their purchases, it's not only just the students approving it, but it's the principal approving it. And it's typically the advisor approving it at the building level first before it comes over to the district office. So fortunately with one of the P card transactions, it's already been performed and it's already been cleared through the budget process. So they've already procured that amount via your budget. You know, of course, if there's anything outside of the budget, they have to ask for, you know, budget transfer or funds to support. But typically, all these purchases are underneath approved budget labels. That's not to say that the administrators don't look at their budget, they do. But typically, at this time of year, from anywhere from, well, we just sent out the purchase order reconciliation. We find out what hasn't been purchased and what needs to be purchased for the end of the year so we can get a good idea of what the funds are needed. Typically, at this point in time of the year, they're making all their purchases underneath the budget. And so we do audit these items when they do come over to the business office. You know, we're sometimes changing the account numbers. Typically, the card is used for supplies, general supplies, tech supplies, anything related to technology, software. And technology hardware can be purchased off the parents' books, general supplies for the buildings and for, you know, classes. That's typically what anyone uses for, which is tech supplies, materials, which usually goes with the personal classes. Some who say ones on won't pay or won't have that product there that they can't purchase, more than apps for a couple of them. But if they're looking at bulk purchases, it's done through the payment or two year purchase order classes. And so it's a combination. And the P card's in the development was to help administrators and buildings make their purchases. And we're moving away from inventorying items to just in time. So the P card makes it very nice, very affordable, reusable, short time turnaround, delivered directly to the buildings. As a way to procure those items rather than going through the long period process. And it is from one of our vendors, as credible, Ken, some policy.
So, not to be wary with this, I'm going to put this down to my common sense. I'm going to use Jeremy for example of high school. Jeremy considered the budget process. He gives Jason, or he can just collaborate as to what Jeremy believes is budget, he needs as a budget to operate the school, which would include most of the stuff that you just spoke about, correct? And Jason takes that into account with all the other schools, administrating, he has to straighten heads, it comes up with the recommended budget that he brings back to the board. So if they were looking to cut something, they'd be looking at, at the individual administrator. But at the end of the day, Jeremy, and I'm using, I apologize using your example, he hasn't allowed a budget amount that he has to stay within during that particular budget year, correct?
That's correct. And if there are any cuts that need to be incurred because maybe one department needs something versus another, then he's got to go back to the teachers and, you know, figure out how and what's going to be done. That's not at the business office level. That is the administrators having the decentralization process in place to better control their budget. Because they're the ones that's submitted. And so, you know, they're keeping track of what line items, all of those budget secretaries are keeping track of all the purchases made against the budget. And they know firsthand whether they're within budget, whether it was over budget, and where any of those costs were.
Is it also possible for little line items to be fundraisers? And I really don't know the answer to this. Where you have fundraisers working at a particular school and they're, they're going to procure something. Would that also show up on the financials even though it's not coming out of taxpayers per month per se? It's coming out of that fundraiser account.
Just, just to give an example, you know, Dunkin' Donuts was mentioned. We buy gift cards for our Stars Award winners. So when students win a North Star for being role models of the school and we have our Stars breakfast and they get a little mug. And they get a $10 gift card for Dunkin' Donuts in there. So you might see a $100 Dunkin' Donut purchase. It's ten, ten gift cards to go to students. And it's my responsibility to record what students are they going to. So Belinda knows Jeremy didn't take ten gift cards and give them to his cousins. So there's just one, and that comes out of the Star student account, activity account. And recently, you know, the school musical, there were a lot of Amazon purchases for, for musical supplies. Yeah, a lot. And that comes from the, the student activity account for, for the musical. So it doesn't really come out of the general budget, but you mentioned plenty of different examples that, that do.
Right, the general budget at the, at the building level, it's a smaller amount of money. It doesn't include our biggest costs, obviously, the people. So it's just the supplies and those things that our, that our principals have control over. We've kept, because we, because we do try to keep, keep those costs low, we haven't grown those since sixteen seventeen. So those are still at the sixteen seventeen actual level. So that's a number of years now where we've kept those accounts significantly flat since sixteen seventeen. And then last year, if you remember from some of the budget presentations, those are the areas that we cut a million dollars from whenever we did this previous year's budget.
One more thing, President Hesimer, just so you mention it. We do get donations for Stars. So that's one thing you said about it might not always be taxpayer funded. Historically, the Stars program has been funded by sponsors, Tevis Energy, Gettysburg Peas, a number of others, the Optimist Club of Gettysburg. So it's, it's funded through, through donations. The past couple of years, we haven't had those sponsors in for breakfast, so we haven't asked them for money. So the account has come down, which is why I'll make decisions. We're going to do, we're going to do a survey with the University of Michigan about a month from now, tenth graders. And if you wonder, why are we doing these surveys? Well, they've, they've offered $2,000. Yes, are they data mining? Yes. Do I use that money for good in our schools? Yes. It's $2,000 that I can give to students for awards breakfast and Dunkin' Donut gift cards that our taxpayers don't have to pay for. So we do, we do fund those in a variety of different ways.
Thank you, Jeremy. Sorry, Michelle.
There was also two things on here from mining books for the literacy program at Franklin and at Kings Gettys. Is there a way when we do these things that we can see what books that were given these kids? I mean, I know that for some, I know that that's not really our, our thing, but you're asking me to pay for it, so I'm going to see what it is.
Chris, do you know what those books are for?
I do. Yes, they're books for small group.
I believe that's one.
Yeah. Down at the bottom.
Hello?
Oh, there. Okay. They're books for small group reading instruction, decodable text. Student work, books that are, have words and word patterns that our students have been instructed on early on. So they can read books instead of just words on paper. So, you know, they're used for small group instruction. Asking to see those, you know, as soon as we receive them, we get them out in the hands of the teachers and the students. But when we're on our tours, that would be a wonderful time possibly to.
When, years ago, when I would come to the board meetings, I remember seeing like, oh, hey, we're going to change to this textbook.
Right, this is not a textbook.
Right, but you would have like the books there saying, hey, you guys, this is what we're going to do.
Right.
And we would still do that for like, I knew about a great chemistry book for us.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Anything additional? Not hearing anything. Roll call. Mike? Yes. Michelle? Ryan? Al? Yes. Amy Beth?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Jeremy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Items for board action is six point one for reform reservation, may I have a motion?
Removed.
So second question, and before I take any, or anyone takes the floor, I'm going to ask Al to, if he recalled at the last meeting, for him just to give a short presentation or conversation with us. I promise I'll keep it brief and I know Alex Hayes is here tonight and I appreciate him publishing a couple of my letters to the editors regarding this issue. Over four hundred twenty schools, public schools across the Commonwealth have done a similar resolution. And Belinda, I appreciate you drafting this one for us. Bottom line is, public schools are being grossly overcharged for the services of our charter schools. This resolution is not questioning the charter school existence, it's questioning the way that they're being funded. And frankly, I would like to see them, us being charged, our schools being charged, the actual cost. That's not happening right now. We are being charged well over and beyond the actual cost of the services that the charter schools are providing for us. And I just find it amazing and a little disheartening when I look at some of the budgets of these charter schools. And we started talking about financial issues tonight and some of the things on our routine approvals. But the advertising budget for a lot of these charter schools is enormous. The large fund balances that some of these charter schools have, and they have very little in the way of operating expenses and overheads that a true brick and mortar school would have, such as Gettysburg area school district. And then when you take a look at the CEO salaries or the equivalent of the superintendent of these schools, makes Dr. Parent's salary looks miniscule. But so, so my thought tonight is, and I would greatly appreciate the board considering supporting this resolution along with four hundred twenty other public schools across the Commonwealth. Just to send a message, I'm not sure it's going to go anywhere to the General Assembly and Harrisburg, but at least I think we take a stand. Thank you. Anything additional question? Hearing the roll call. Jeremy?
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Amy Beth?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Informational items, seven point one preliminary budget variables, I believe Belinda has a presentation for the board. If the board, if any members of the board can't see, if you haven't been through this process before, you can, you can move around your room until we get our state of the art system set up.
Hello, okay, that's all. Thank you. So, this evening, just a real quick overview. I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. This is just a review of the resolution that our board adopted. The ultimate goal was to make sure that we place a high value on the academics achievements. We base some short and long term fiscal goals in place. We keep in mind all of the uncertainty around the state and federal government. We currently have a five year capital plan and we need to maintain a capital year plan, make sure our infrastructure stays intact at the most reasonable fiscal planning that we can do. And we need to be cautious in our deck of asking how we can optimize our future bond ratings in which we are going to take advantage of relatively soon here. in which we are going to take advantage of relatively soon here with the rest of the borrowing of the board fiscal management relation in terms of the debt that we borrow. At some point, basically our items that we have are as a policy states. So our fund balance is a fall between 16%. And our goal of the fiscal management resolution is to ensure that our revenues equal expenditures by 2617. So that is not saying that is all in one year process. It's going to be a long range scenario at this point. This is a little hard to read. So it basically shows a review of the fund balance that has been used. The others are fund balance, which usually is one category that's most discussed over a period of time. Since 1718, we have been drawing effectively an effort and trying to draw down the others of fund balance so that we can stay consistent within our policies as well as cognizant of financial taxpayers in itself. These numbers basically here and share since 1718, we pushed down from 9.5, from, excuse me, $13 million to $9.5 million. So we had an asset of a 20% drop of $3.6 million. The following year, we had another drop of about $100,000 from 1819. 1920 is a little over a million dollar drop along with 2021, better million, 1.4 million. And then the estimated budget using a fund balance in the budget process, that's considering the resolution that's already in place. We're looking at potentially drawing down another 2.29 million. Relative to the growth, of course, our cumulative fund balances on the decline since 1718. And we are still compliant with our policies in terms of the 17%. And we hope to maintain that with the fiscal management resolutions and the budget decision. All right, so the review of the budget from the preliminary stages as it stands. This review is based upon all funds without ESER. And that ESER came in in a lot of confusion the prior year because it was all new. That was a lot of money and we still continue to roll it over. But in the end, ESER money, you can not look at it in itself by itself versus looking at it in terms of your total budget. And why that is, is because ultimately, when it comes down to revenue and expenditures for ESER, ESER revenue in should equal your expenditures out. So it should be a one in, one out. And if it doesn't equal that here, then it's only accounting operation to where we'll accrue those funds for the following year. But ultimately, why don't people look at the budget now moving forward without consideration of ESER? Because ESER is going away. It's not going to be around after 2024. And I don't foresee anything coming out of the governor's office to say that it's going to increase basic subsidy to the point of which ESER funds can be afforded for us. With that being said, the 2021 is the actual local, state, federal, and other sources of revenue, total revenues and total expenditures. Where we can see that we've had revenue less expenditure of $1.9 million use of. The budget for 2122 without ESER, and this is taking out ESER on revenue and expenditures, we are looking at 64 million versus 69 million, or 4.4 million, which is the sound fund balance for the budget. And then moving forward, preliminary of this particular stage in time, we have local revenue of 44.9 million. Our state is pretty much flat level funded. The governor has made a really nice proposal, but again, it's stuck in the chambers too and not known whether or not that will get approved by the end of June. One will be questioned whether or not it will be, but for climate purposes, we have to move forward in the district and adopt our budget. Sometimes we move forward the state and we adopt theirs. So best case scenario, because we'll continue to receive the same amount of money in terms of state money as we currently have planned for the budget in 2122. The federal dollars are decreased in terms of removing ESER qualifications. And this is basically Title I, II, III, and IV federal money. And others typically is sale of assets. So at the present moment, our revenues are $65 million and our expenditures are $72 million, which equates to a 1.39% of the local revenues pretty much because state and federal have changed. And then, of course, the expenditures are 4.67%. I find numbers very fascinating, of course, but what I find most fascinating is the most recent CPI and cost inflation index is 70%. So one would think, of course, we're going to have automatic increases no matter what we do in terms of supplies, in terms of utilities and all of the things. And those things will play itself out. It's just we're not quite sure exactly how that's going to work at this particular point. But realizing that, you know, in the current terms of budget, 4.67% increase over the prior year is pretty darn good in terms of what we may see when it comes time for the actuals to come through. But at this particular point in time, we have a deficit of only deploys of about 7.2 million. We have seen growth in terms of the real estate. We have received a first-stage assessment violation from the county's office in which just real estate worth from some development to go into play, if you're playing time, is represented here, but it's not all inclusive just yet. So we're still receiving some lower assessment value from the county that we can prove. So for example, interestingly, we've asked about the estate up there. So in terms, we have seen an increasing assessment value, which would be an increase in local revenue on the current, which that we currently have is represented in here. Any questions on this particular side? All right, so the final piece, and I apologize to, this is a little hard to read. Let's take a little piece of it on the left. So where is our budget following and why are we running a 7.2 million expenditures? At the moment, our salaries in itself are $603,000 with just the terms and conditions and contracts that are already in place. Our retirement and pieces, of course, benefits. Our medical benefits are 1.18%. And so that's in the insurance, medical, vision, and the health savings account. 8% on loan will bring us up about $707,000. The retirement in itself was still an increase, it's a smaller percent jump from year to year, but that's still looking at about $235,000. In terms of utilities and disposal, disposal is listed here simply because formerly the food service department paid for waste management and now that is to be a part of the general fund. So of course, we had to bring it over here on the general fund side. So typically, that is the majority of the portion, about $42,000. And then, of course, the utilities and the maintenance and repairs is another portion. Transportation, we're in the process of soon, very soon to meet with our contractors. We have seven of them. We are looking to renew a contract. Preliminary, this is a small increase. Hoping that we can come at or near this number when we come to the final negotiations and when the contracts open. But we need to meet with the contractors and I have all the legal details and requests as well as negotiate some terms and conditions yet. The biggest driver of this budget is charter schools. And while I have charter schools, tuition, ACTI, and alternate replacement, the largest portion of that number is charter schools. And I have another slide to show following this. Second, that is comes in about 1.1 million. Secondly, our general supplies overall, tech hardware, software, and supplies in the technology department comes in, so that's nearly $200,000. And of course, our special education costs just continue to increase every year. So that is nothing unheard of in terms of paying a budget charge here. So these numbers align, just the increases are about 1.1 million dollars. Again, this is a preliminary budget. We're still working with the numbers. And we have some, you know, a lot of decisions to be made for now in June time. But I mentioned some of the charter discussion. Some of my members probably have already seen this before. This is a review of the charter in terms of our actuals from 1718 to 2021. Our 2021 year, we started the budget with $3.9 million budget. And our actuals came in, overall, it's what it was of $5 million. The difference, of course, amount of the other appointments to make sure that we satisfy all the required invoices and bills for that. When we were building our budget, we made the determination in 2122 to stay at $3.9 million. So we didn't increase charter schools at all. However, year to date, February invoices paid in March is slightly over $3 million. So I anticipate to be backed up at $5 million again. Therefore, we'll be using those as our fund balance to help balance this expenditure out. This is one of the largest drivers in our budget. And, you know, like we said, it's volume is to trying to get charter reform because we'd save quite a bit of money if we were paying charters our actual tuition cost, but we wouldn't see near the numbers. So with that being said, knowing that we're going to hit probably $5 million again, because the numbers really haven't dropped in the charter schools. They're still remaining pretty consistent even with the COVID years. I anticipate us getting to $5 million by the end of June. And therefore, that's why we took a look at the preliminary stages to increase the charter allocation to a little over $5 million. I think we're going to be there in terms of 22, 23, unless there's some charter reform that comes and gives us a reprieve. But, you know, again, we can play Russian roulette here and say we bought budget $3.9 million, saved us a little over $1 million. But if we miss the budget, it's still going to be coming out of the others in fund balance. And our goal is to get a little bit better in terms of recording our expenditures and our revenue. So we are, you know, heading on the path to like least resistance, least reliance, I should say, on the other fund balance and get our expenditures and our revenue comprised, you know, equally for the long range effect. And lastly then, just the overview of what's up and coming. Again, our next board meeting, probably in a week. Next board meeting, April 4th, we'll review some preliminary revenue expenditure summaries. So you'll see some of that detail at some point in time. That's not to say that we're not going to continue working on it. It is a working document and you can change up to the very end before the approval of the board. But this point in time, the outline that we have is that we'll share a meeting on April 18th, May 2nd, May 16th. And then our goal would be to recommend adoption of the budget for June 6th as we have in the past. Hoping to keep this very summarized for you and hoping it's met. And if there's any questions on it, I'm happy to enter them now and or future meetings that we have. But this is just kind of the new, very high level of layout at this particular point in time.
We'll also place the slideshow on the district website and the business office site.
And Belinda, correct me if I'm wrong, the vast majority of what you just presented tonight, even though I know it might not be exact, we have minimal control over those things. Am I right? There's just a small part of the budget that we actually have some degree of control for a lot of these fixed expenses.
That's correct. In normal budget, your total control is probably 3% or less.
Some other words, this is what my thick ear, I'm Bill Murray on ground all day. Because we're going to get crushed again. We're going to be put on the spot to debate. And when the actuality is, is people will be more successful going to their local representatives and looking for change, the change that we cannot provide. And the taxpayers are going to take the hit because we have legislators that are not motivated or moving for that change that needs to happen in public education. And that's just a fact. I said it every year, I'm Bill Murray today. One last comment. When you say you wanted to on the resolution that we passed, in briefly looking over the audit, it would appear that we overshot, we overbudgeted somewhere in the tune of $853,000. So are we looking to bring that number closer together?
You mean overshot, you mean like?
Well, I think what our, if I look at.
Well, we didn't meet our planned resolution. Is that what you mean term?
Well, no, I don't think we're going to meet our planned resolution immediately. I think when the board debated that, we looked at a five to six-year plan to allow for the adjustments with monthly growth. But to try to settle in to where we had revenue and expenditures starting to equal out. But if I looked at the audit correctly, and I could be wrong, we budgeted X amount and we came in at X amount. And if I'm not mistaken, it was the two of those $850,000.
Right, it was the least amount we've ever had left over after an audit. So that's not a lot going back in on a signed fund balance when the difference between revenues and expenditures is, you know, over $3 million or $4 million. So our goal over the number of years has been to get more accurate predicting revenues and expenditures. You know, you always want to be, you always want to have something left over. You never want to be on the other side of that line, you know, after a fiscal year. But we're trying to get as accurate as we can. But you can't get too accurate if you're relying on the amount from unassigned fund balance that's left over. But we'll get into pretty specific conversations about those variables as we move forward. Next two months.
Belinda, is there a specific reason that the money that they give the federal government every year declined instead of being reduced?
That's a very good question, Tim. It typically does. The only way we saw it increase was because of the ESER that came through. On a normal year to year, you'll see our allocations in Title I, II, III, and IV. Very early on, September, budget's in place. Then they do a budget adjustment, usually in February, March. And typically, they'll come in a lot lower than what we anticipated. Now, occasionally, you may get one title count go a little higher versus another. But overall, on the general scheme, it does come in typically lower just because the allocation is changing. And these federal dollars are completely separate from the federal dollars in terms of the food service program.
The interesting thing about federal dollars too, for folks that have a history on special education is when IDEA was originally passed years and years ago, you know, one of the things that came with that federal legislation was that they were going to support special ed costs. So if you look at the district's special ed costs versus what we receive in reimbursement, you know, districts have obviously taken a big load of that as well as we try to find the best services that we can for our students, you know, in the learning process. But with the original plan was pass legislation, help schools fund all of this. But as you've seen, federal dollars have actually decreased. Now, there are some pass-through funds from federal through state that are earmarked for special education. But there probably isn't a district in the state that you went to that said, you know, are you funded appropriately for the special education services that you're providing? I'd be surprised if anybody said yes.
I can't imagine anybody would say yes.
One of your previous districts?
Special education was always, you know, it's on right.
So I have two more questions. And one is, are there any, for the $7 million that is our, I guess, difference in our budget, out of any of that, is there potential ESER money that we're hoping to get to offset some of that?
If you mean, there we, like.
I know we applied, but I don't know what.
Yeah, like we've done, like we've done in previous years, we would try to, we would try to use a majority of that money for one-time costs. Because, because ESSR will go away, you don't want to do things like, you know, support fifteen new positions with it. You know, those, those types of things because they're going to disappear. So with ESSR, you try to do those like one-time purchases. It's why we utilized it to say, um, do a year's worth of life, life cycle funding for Chromebooks, for instance, because it's a one-time cost. But at the same time, you really can't take it out of your budget because when ESSR disappears, you'd have to increase your budget that amount again to get back up to, to normal, to normal levels. So, um, so it's kind of a combination answer. It's, um, with as much one-time costs as we can, you know, we'll supplement, but we won't know what it looks like until we actually get reimbursed. And what we heard from the board, you know, last year and as we moved toward this year is like, show us the budget without, you know, ESSR.
Yeah.
So, but that's what we're going to, yeah.
I just wanted to see if there was anything or how much was potential to.
Yes, there would be. So, so at the end of that fiscal year, you know, when you audit that fiscal year, um, could there be, could there be savings that would then go back into unassigned fund balance for the following year? That's where you would see that on that year's audit.
So, and, and one other question was, I know during our audit, um, we saw the debacle with food service, uh, free lunches. Is that going to be the same for this year that we're just going through since they did free lunches again?
That's a really good question. USDA has not come out and authorized the free lunch program again. And so PDE through, um, the resources of National School Lunch Program has indicated to us, you know, you need to start planning to start operating because you would need COVID. Which means you need to set applications out, you need to make sure that our, um, our price per meal is set according to the, um, uh, the inflation, um, calendars or schedule that they provide us. We need to make sure that we're communicating on the lunch prices, meal applications will go out, required to come back, and we'll be back to charging for prices again unless USDA comes in. They have not made it a part of the budget approval process. So we've been informed of our business without receiving that free lunch for the meal.
So, but for this remainder of this school year, it is still free?
This remainder of this year, yeah.
But in saying that, so the, they required us to give out free lunches, but they only supplemented us the actual food. They did not supplement the labor costs to prepare said food. Am I correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And that, I just wanted to make that so everybody in the public knows why. You know what I mean? Uh, I just, it would have made more sense to me if they would have said, hey, we're going to give you this. It's not necessarily going to be free, but it's going to reduce. You can charge enough to cover your cost to prepare that food. You know, because now that we'll say the taxpayers have to burn the cost of everybody eating lunch when they could have paid a dollar for lunch instead of two dollars and twenty-five cents for lunch and broke even. So it's what, is what, but.
We'd prefer if we had another year and, and work ourselves back into regular operations. Um, but it doesn't look like this, that, that I'm coming for. I think May will be our stop drop timeframe to make sure that we're sending the food patients out to our families to say that we'll back to regular pricing.
And right, and with, um, with the, with the, with any type of charter funding change, um, even if it just got to where it was pretty fair, um, it'd be, it'd be millions of dollars for this district.
Okay, man.
Millions.
But that's never going to happen because there's donations through campaign finance to one organization and the other organization is counteracting that. And that's why it's not happening and nobody's talking about it.
What I'd like to say, and I'll never miss this opportunity to say this, is we can talk about charter reform and loving our politicians and change the law. But public schools, including this one, all public schools need to look, figure out why families are leaving public education and going to charter schools. And we need to fix that so they come back to public school. Because it's not just, it's just not a problem with the legislators. There's a reason people are leaving.
Well, I think part of that is some people look at it as a free private school in their head. That's kind of my favorite thing, it's free private schools. Like, some of my kids is alone for free. That's what they think at the start. Now, whether their curriculum's different than ours or they do something different than we do, whatever that case may be. But then they also are advertising, like Gettysburg ain't, come to Gettysburg and come to our school, but you can go to that school from anywhere. You know, you can only go here if you live in our district, which is, changes everything as well.
I would agree with Michael a hundred percent. I do think schools need to look at, uh, the rationale and motivation as to why, uh, some parents and students are choosing. But I can tell you as a former superintendent, going through this process myself and really analyzing it, a big part of it is people are escaping accountability in the public school systems. We owe kids accountable for behavior. We owe kids accountable for their academics. We owe kids accountable to attend school on a regular basis. When mom and dad become their principal or when the charter school liaison virtually becomes their principal, they get away with a lot more liberties than what they would in a public school system. So that's part of the rationale. I'm not saying that's the whole rationale, but, but we, we hold kids accountable. And frankly, I, I think it's good that we have some accountability for our young students.
I think we, we, you know, we put a number of things in place over the past four years to Mike's point, um, to, uh, to market what we do. So that people are at least making, um, informed decisions when they're choosing, uh, you know, the education that they're choosing. And we've really kind of targeted, um, elementary because folks tend to make that decision at kindergarten and then kind of ride it out regardless of what they, what they've decided. So those are, those are kind of our, our target areas when trying to do what, what Mike had suggested.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you, Glenn. Seven point two Adams County Technical Institute operating budget. Are there any questions related to that information line?
Sean's here from ACTI. Is there any questions for, uh, Sean? Or is there anything that you want to share with our board? I know that you probably have gone to board meetings throughout the county. So if there's anything that, that you wanted to highlight or share that you think our board should be aware of with regards to the budget, that would be great.
I really didn't prepare a presentation, uh, but a couple of pages in, actually the first page in there has some general bullet points about our budget. It really hasn't changed much since we formed the Adams County Technical Institute, which reflects deep costs, uh, about level. You will see on the revenue summary page, there is some additional revenue that ACTI is getting now it's the Grand Tech Institute subsidy. And that helps offset the cost of running our programs. The joint operating committee is discussing how to use that money to help grow our programs. And I just did a few quick numbers to compare some of the numbers that were put out about charter schools. And I, I'd share those numbers with you if you'd like, but, uh, I think the value that you're getting for sending your students to Adams County Technical Institute for approximately, uh, four thousand two hundred dollars per student per year is a great deal, especially when compared to other counties in the state. And they spend at least six to twenty thousand dollars per student to send to Grand Tech schools. I think what we do is a great deal for your students. About, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Now, I'll go along with that. I actually, um, I did a walk through and what we offer, the, what we can offer our kids, it's just, it's unbelievable. Um, I'd like to see our, our kids within our district take, take more advantage of that. You know, if we have the seats to do so, because it really is invaluable. If you look at the rate of the kids that actually go to college versus the kids that don't by attending that, by ACTI, I mean, that gives them the stepping standard. Helps them get that foot into the, into the workforce. And, uh, you know, we need to take full advantage of that, which I don't know that we really are as a district. I don't know that any district really is. But it's something we need to look at for sure.
Sean, Sean, I echo that. We did a, uh, a tour of the middle school a week or so ago. Um, I will speak for the board, you have broad board support for, for ACTI. And more importantly, the board, uh, spoke with Nancy, um, because the board was interested in exploring what we could do to promote the vocational end of this. Recognizing that not, colleges either not affordable, it's not always in, in the student's best interest for a variety of reasons. And I think if we can develop a program or some sort of avenue into the kids at the middle school, I think it only heightens and gives that opportunity as they get into the high school. So I can tell you from the board members were present there and I probably can say I could speak for all board members, you have, the program has our support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next is seven point three draft sale agreement. You have any questions on seven point three? Seven point four overnight trip? Seven point five electronic devices. Yeah, seven, when I'm going to let Jason.
Yeah, seven point five has been through the, uh, the policy committee. Administration was asked to do it, um, together and update a policy, uh, that would provide, um, more specific guidelines within our schools for, uh, use of electronic devices. And most often we're referring to, um, you know, smartphones, cell phones, those types of things. So, so the draft, the draft policy that you see before you is kind of paired with, um, policy eighteen because we want the language obviously to, to parallel one another. So what you see basically is an attempt to, um, to kind of strengthen the ability for our, um, administrators to allow staff to really, um, support only using these for, um, educational endeavors. To eliminate, um, a lot of the issues that come with not using them for educational endeavors to take up a lot of time in our buildings. So our staff, our teachers, our administrators, um, and, uh, so the, the draft that you see here, um, allows for admin then to, to create, uh, to create, um, sections of their handbooks, to update their, their handbooks to, uh, you know, to work on, to work on doing that. Because we certainly, uh, there's a delicate balance between utilizing them as a resource for learning where appropriate. And then obviously, uh, we want to make sure that we're mitigating against improper use. Because we don't want to, uh, disrupt the educational environment, not just for, for students who might be incorrectly using them, but for everybody else that happens to be, um, around that area that also disrupts their education. Because it's not generally just one individual that becomes the name for, tends to be, um, you know, a number of students. So that's really where those two policies, um, you know, came from in terms of why the policy committee looked at them. And, uh, and certainly we had conversations, um, with, uh, within the committee. And also they included, uh, some teacher reps and some administrator reps and some board members and, um, so right now it's obviously in draft form. It would come back to the next meeting for, uh, for approval. So this policy strengthens our administrators' ability, um, to deal with those types of things.
So, so for clarification and put it in layman's terms, the biggest change that we're going to see from adopting, potentially adopting this policy is, is the district-wide policy will very closely resemble what's currently seen at the middle school. Where cellphone usage from, as you said, you know, from the start to end of school will only be limited to approved educational use? That's correct?
That's the way the policy's, um, breaking currently. And certainly, uh, certainly in terms of, uh, you know, administrators that have to, can do it on a daily basis, um, would have to actually, you know, get that out and, uh, put the procedures out for kids and families well in advance. And obviously, any changes that we would look at would be for the next fall. You know, we wouldn't institute any kind of change with forty days left of school. This is, this would be for fall of, uh, twenty-two.
And one more point of clarification, especially for any parents listening. Also, what this policy does is strengthens and provides tools for the administration to actually, um, take steps for potential discipline and, and ways to enforce the policy. Is that correct?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, mine, I just have a comment. And, um, I get the premise of the policy and I probably agree about ninety-eight percent of it. The problem I have is that it's so essentially black and white that I worry about the, I don't want to see it be used for, you know, the child who texts their parents that I need money in my lunch account. Or I forgot my gym clothes and now they're getting in trouble with the big, now I understand that you shouldn't be going in class in the middle of the teacher talking. But if you're in the hallway or you're in the lunchroom or whatever, that you're not getting hammered for taking down stuff. You know what I mean? You're not really necessarily, I mean, I get that somebody's taking a picture of a fight or, um, using their phone to, I get all those, they're, they're pretty evident. But I don't want to become nitpicky with little stuff. And I don't, if you, if you keep it too black and white, it doesn't give you room for that.
I think that there's, um, at least from reading the policy, um, and certainly, um, you all have to pass it, so if you disagree. I think the policy's broad enough that it gives the administrators some leeway with, in putting the handbook together, um, to think about ways to do what you just said. For the, for those common sense kinds of things that come up.
The, the problem with that, Jason.
The same token, sorry.
Go ahead.
On the same token, we also need the school administrators and all the teachers and everybody then comply with our request for this policy. It's not going to work without support and of course, parents as well.
Well, Jason, the, I have misgivings and I understand that this is probably the board majority support. We don't, do we approve the student handbook?
We approve the student handbooks right before the start of the year in the summer.
So would the board have input on that to ensure that student handbook allows for flexibility on, 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 on certain cases? I'm echoing Tim. I'm going to use the example of kids tuning instruments, kids using it for diabetes check. A student who walks out of a sixth grade classroom, goes out in the hallway, having a bad day, calls her mom, texts. What's the matter sweetheart? Here's what's happening, you were sleeping, needed to tell you this. Puts the phone back in her locker, teacher sees it. Is that student now losing that phone? Does she get punished? I would hope not. Because what we're doing right now broadly, unless we, unless the handbook settles it in, settles, settles it back into place, we're punishing ninety-nine percent of the students for one percent who don't use a cellphone. And I used an analogy, I've used it with every board member that I've talked to. It's no different than the gun rules. And I need to bring guns in here. But you can, the argument that the gun didn't do the damage, the person did. So everybody wants to ban guns. Well, the cellphone's not doing the mis, the misbehavior, it's the student for whatever reason. So we're going to punish ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the students that are utilizing their cellphones in a proper productive manner for most of the time. I'm not out in left field for the one or two that's armed.
I think, I think after having discussions with Jason about the handbook thing, I think the policy sets, it writes the policy. But the handbook can spell out, and he also mentioned that this is something that would go into effect next fall. And it'd be plenty of time to communicate the nuances in terms of like inappropriate use or responsible use would be if you need to contact your mom because you need to, you have money to put on your lunch account or you, you just need to call mom for whatever reason. You would do that in the same way you would do, or get permission the same way you would before cellphones existed. That doesn't, I think those means and exceptions would still be there. It would just be a little different.
So I mean, my, my suggestion, because, because certainly the, you know, the board could approve or not approve the handbooks when they, when they come through. But my suggestion is knowing that this is something that's going to take some education and those kind of things is, is, is look at, look at that section well before we would bring a full handbook to, uh, you know, to approval. So that we don't get stuck on August fifth, August fifteenth saying, hey, the board doesn't like the way that this, that this looks at, you know, middle and high school. I would rather know in May, like that, that this section looks pretty good and people are comfortable with it. That way we complete the rest of the handbook and then it becomes less of an issue when it goes time to, to approve the full handbook.
I'm looking at the principals, see if that makes sense?
No offense, but, um, there's many schools in the Commonwealth that have adopted no cellphone policies, pretty cut and dry. You guys are all talking about, well, we need to have this exception, that exception. Pretty simple, no cellphone means no cellphone. Um, if you need to call your mom, tell the principal about this. You do it like when I was a kid or anyone else was a kid. I know technology and things change, but don't kids still need to know how to tune their instruments without a cellphone? Don't they need to still have to live without a cellphone? Just throwing that out there for everybody.
And I, and I'm not disputing, and you and I've had a conversation about this. And it's my understanding that principals and administration had input in policy. And I agree with what Mike was saying. My worry is that we fine tune the student handbook. I just, you know, the principals and administration, they're in there every single day, not us. And they indicate or tell us there's an issue in a particular area, we should pay attention real quickly. And if they're, at the end of the day, satisfied with how the policy's written, then they can live with that policy. So can I, but I certainly would put a lot more emphasis on the student handbook.
I know that, um, Savox went to the policy thing and we had a robust conversation between the administration and our thought and primarily as parents also along with board members. And you mentioned diabetes, um, that would fall under a five oh four plan. I want to make sure that that is very separate from, uh, general use. What we see traditionally is that the cellphones would cause more problems than not. And that is why we're going to go at it, but in a matter of punishing, as a matter of really having the ability to make sure that the kids are focused on their studies. Last month I mentioned that we are not moving our requirements in all subjects at all levels, including one, excluding one which is biology in high school. That should always be our focus. I know that with the cellphone use, for me, I feel like that that has distracted students. And from left to right, I do look, look at it, um, you know, that is something that is still considered important.
I think that the problem, uh, is that cellphones are key. They're not going away unless there's some new technology that comes out thirty years from now, they're gonna have cellphones. And just like anything else, uh, cellphones have a lot of good things and they have a lot of bad things. Um, and playing on the cellphones, the material that can go onto the cellphones usually gets you in trouble. But I think we have to find a happy medium of, uh, living with the age of cellphones. And, you know, I'm an old schooler, comes that stuff, I'm still, I'm still stuck where he is a little bit and my heart about to skip around him because I didn't have, but I also didn't realize that the world has changed. I just don't want it to be, I just don't wanna punish, uh, every kid for every little nickel and dime thing that's done. It has to be stuff that's, you legitimately know you weren't supposed to be doing that and that's why you're getting in trouble. And I just don't want it to be buttholes and have them all running around checking everybody's phone and being a massacre of detentions because somebody texted their parents.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna put Nancy on the spot, but the biggest change obviously is gonna be in the high school. The, the way that Nancy and the middle school run their policy and, and their expectations, like obviously it's not an issue in, in elementary school, that probably isn't. But, you know, coming from middle school into high school, it's, like the, the brakes are off. Um, it's, it's kind of a free for all in terms of what's allowed in middle school and what's not. So, I think it's just gonna be a matter of setting expectations and it'll be an adjustment period, I'm sure. But, um, that's why we have really great administrators.
So, um, I was alerted to, there was a teacher someplace in the country, and I'm not sure where, but, um, she asked her students to all turn their cellphones on in classrooms and turn them on as loud as possible. And every time a student got an alert, whether it be Facebook, Instagram, email, Snapchat, a phone call, a text, or Twitter, the student had to go up to the board and put a tally under what it was. You would be surprised at what that board looked like after each period. I think these were their distraction and I don't know, Mr. Lux, maybe that's something other teachers would like to experiment and see just how distracting the phones are. Just an objection.
I'm sure, I'm sure the board was full of tallies, I can, I can imagine.
It was, so, and, I mean, maybe, maybe, maybe we look at that, how distracting are they?
I think we all know the answer. I mean, I should speak on the microphone.
That was my cue.
Sure. Obviously there's all kinds of good, all kinds of bad come with the cellphones. High school's different than middle school. I mean, if you want the high school to look a little like the middle school, um, in, in that way, um, I, I get that in some ways. I ask for some caution for other reasons. You know, we're trying to grow kids towards, uh, towards life. As Mr. Sigma said, like it or not, part of life. I mean, I think about things beyond just the practical. I wanna text my mom about my appointment this afternoon. I need my dad to put money in my account for gas after school. I used to take Sports Illustrated, the actual magazine, with me to school. I used to read real newspapers, they still do exist. But anymore, you know, students are also interacting with the world in ways socially. Um, and I get that it can be very distracting when you talk about certain types of social media. It's, it's dangerous, it's distracting. Um, I'm tempted to say, yes, please, get it out of my school. I just don't know that, um, a nuclear option is the best option. Do I get the temptation? I think there's, there's plenty of things that students do, even communicating with college coaches who are recruiting them or, or tweeting about some of their, we, I mean, we tweet, we tweet what, what teachers are doing in the classroom, what, what kids are doing, um, on, on the mat or on the stage or with their instrument and to, to grow excitement, um, in kids and, and that's the whole purpose of doing that. So, I, I mean, I, I know that there's plenty of things that go on that just make you cringe. And I send my kids to, to school with cellphones, now including my sixth grader who just got one, mostly for practical reasons, I don't think he uses it during school. That, my daughter, I, I just trust her, trust that she uses it well. We talk about what to do with them, what not to do with them. It's my job as a parent, um, they're gonna head off in the, into the world and they're gonna be fine. I say that with confidence, my kids, because they're my job as a parent. It's just the way it is. Uh, do you, do you hear about the worst of the worst coming out from your students? I mean, my, I know what my kids tell me about what their peers do with their cellphones, about the pictures that are taken, the pictures that are sold. Um, I mean, you name it, it happens, it's gonna happen outside of school, it's gonna happen inside of school. It's, it's one, you know, I, we say steal your phones when you're trying to learn, that's, that's the rule. I like the policy honestly, it gives us a lot of leverage. I, I think, uh, there's some things that happen with cellphones that I would like a little bit more leverage to, to discipline in terms of recording the fights. If it's out in the classroom, you know, we're not playing a cat and mouse game, we know that you have, um, our backs and, uh, you know, we have your support to, to say, it's policy, boom, you know, here's the consequence. And we already tried to do that, um, but you know, we try not to be too, too militant with anything. Um, you know, I've heard kids say for a variety of reasons, this place is like a prison. You know, I get the fact that it's much less like a prison than middle school, uh, but I've, I've heard that. I've heard, kids have dropped out because of that. I, I mean, I can think of a kid in my head who's just like, I'm just overly regulated here, can't stand it, I feel like a caged animal. So, when you, when you start to, you know, close the walls in even more, um, I get the temptation. I just say, be a little cautious.
No, no offense, sir. I'm sitting here listening to this and I'm getting frustrated by the moment. One thing I'm hearing is, life is full of rules. And if these kids are feeling that way, our job is to teach them in this environment, where are we failing here? I mean, you just brought up all these things that kids could talk about, um, getting scholarships and doing all stuff. They can do that on their own time, after the school day, but while their eight hours is on school grounds, they can do work. This, this, hearing this just angers me to no end. I have five kids in this school system, two of which are in middle school. And the stuff that has come into my home through these cellphones is ridiculous. And my tolerance and patience is done. So, I'm on this board and I ran for this board because I want action. And I'm hearing all of you guys sit here and tell me that, well, we have to cater to these kids because that's what they want or they're gonna leave school or whatever. We have rules, society has rules and we're meant to teach these rules. So, get on the same page, people, and if you don't like what I have to say, fine, boot me up next time. But this is a hot button for me and I've had it. And whoever's watching this, you know, if you have anything you wanna say, please send it to the administrator of the board and let them know what you think. But I've, I've had it with this. I'm tired of hearing over and over again that, um, you know, imposing rules will hurt feelings. Give me a break, all right? We have to teach these kids to go out in society and be members of society and deal with rules, all right? That's all I have to say.
Don't, don't get me wrong, when it's math class, it's math class. When it's science class, you know, that, that's gonna come out.
During the school day that I see at night, I've had it. I mean, been a cop for twenty-five years, the stuff I see coming into my house, you would get arrested for it. I mean, this is ridiculous.
One of the things that I wanted to mention, and I know that this is, you know, going on, but separate from meeting on the board, separate from me being a mom and seeing the filth coming into my home that I have to then sit down with my children and talk to them about my expectations as a parent, is I'm an employer. So, I employ several, I primarily employ students and actually teachers throughout the summer. So, I now have to have students and children, teenagers come and I have to completely retrain them that the phone is not okay at work, admit work is work. So, they're taught at school that that's not, that is something that they can utilize at any time to call their parents, to do, to look up searches or what have you. But as an employer, it hurts me tremendously to have to reprogram these kids to understand that this is, this work is work and school is work and those two things, they should be taught in school. But I, as an employer, have to retrain students to, you know, figure out that this is not acceptable.
Don't get me wrong, as I've tried to say a couple times, our classroom rule is steal your phones. Phones, phones aren't out. I, I agree, when it's time to work, it's time to work. So, I'm not sure if I'm being misunderstood in that way. Um, I'm talking about hallways, cafeteria.
My, my thought would be-
Well, you can talk through it.
-in moving forward. We have a, a good draft of a policy, maybe it's not perfect at this time, but let's let our administrative team, who we have a lot of faith in, uh, devise something that'll be a synopsis of this policy for their handbook. And then in May or June when we look at those, uh, we, we see how we all feel about that at that time. Uh, but, but, uh, I, I think it's important that we give our staff, our principals and team, uh, some discretion. And again, to deal with the common sense issues and things like that that have been discussed. But, and at the same time, give you the authority to, you know, to hold people accountable in that regard. So, my thought is, uh, let's, uh, let's table this and let you all have an opportunity to crack at, uh, putting a synopsis together that will be a handbook draft. And then we bring this topic up again and see how we feel about it at that time. But, but I think it's important that you all have some degree of discretion.
I think that the, um, I agree with the, putting the handbook together, but I think that the policy is, the policy gives that room if needed. I think the policy is fine and could come back for board approval at the next meeting. I think that the, the policy as it's written in draft form gives the administrators more support and backing to do some of the things that we've talked about.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I'd be interested to see what, what the handbook exceptions and changes look like.
So, what if we implement this policy and, like you're from now, we see it does, it's nothing changed?
And they always-
Can we, can we come back then and make that again?
We can do that with any policy.
Yeah, yeah.
Anytime.
Yeah, we have some policies that we've changed, um, twenty-three years after it was written. And we have some policies that were changed six months after they were written, so we can do it.
I would be willing at this point to say, okay, we're gonna play in your hands. Ball's in your court, for it to, that you're gonna make it work. But if it doesn't work in a year, I'm gonna have to use my mom boys and I don't like using my mom boys.
And I would think no matter what we did, you, you probably wouldn't, um, see any results from this policy until probably this time next year, maybe a little sooner, beginning of the year. So, that policy's in place in the next school year and see how it's developing over the past couple of months. You're not gonna really see any results from it.
It shouldn't take long.
No, it should.
No, but I mean, that's, it's not gonna start till, that's what I'm saying.
But we keep talking about policy, the emphasis, and I hear Michelle said, and Mike said, I understand everyone's point of view here, Ryan, I understand yours, and I've had this conversation. The policy itself, it gives the administration, in my understanding, the ability to adjust as they see needs, which is favorable because they're in that school every day. But the key component to me is gonna be the student handbook. Is that's what's gonna drive what you can and you can't do. The policy allows for some flexibility, to what degree, I guess that's gonna be debated in the student handbook if those ones up. That's how I see it, I could be wrong.
I have a question. In the beginning of each school year, do you guys discuss the handbook with students?
Me?
Anybody?
Yes.
Principals?
Do they do that?
Yes.
All right. So, in the beginning of next school year, you would discuss the cellphone policy with them and the expectations, correct? So, everything is explained? So, then we should know immediately what's taking place, correct? Is that a fair statement?
I would agree, Ryan. And I think really having in, in Jeremy, Nancy, whoever, if I'm speaking wrong, correct me. I think what you see once it's implemented, you'll see communication going out to the families throughout the entire summer process. So, it's not gonna be like you're gonna walk into school on the first day and say, here's a student handbook. By the way, your cellphone has to be stowed from seven fifty-five to three oh five. They're gonna have the format and the knowledge of what the rules are throughout, at some point through the summer months leading up to that first day of school. Am I correct, Jeremy?
Parents are supposed to read it, you know, they, they acknowledge every summer that they read it, but-
I, I agree, and I keep using this analogy.
And that we, we, we have class meetings, we review everything that we think is necessary.
There's a lot of things in the student handbook that's, that's a violation every single day. And the same is if we're gonna talk about kids in the adult world. Every, every day, if somebody's killed by a drunk driver, we don't take cars from them. So, I'm just saying, I, I understand the policy, I support the policy because the administration supports it. But the key for me is gonna be in a fight, if we're gonna have a fight or an argument about it or a disagreement, whatever word you wanna use, is how it's written in that handbook. Because the enforcement of that's gonna be key. But we're wasting our time if you're not gonna enforce it or if it's not enforceable, if you know what I mean?
It's gonna have to be enforced. And, and I like what Dr. Parent said a few minutes ago, is to, 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 you know, educate the students on, and, and the parents throughout the summer, that what, what changes are coming and what some of the expectations are gonna be. And then we'll see what, what the, the handbook looks like in terms of how they're gonna deal with discipline, how they're gonna deal with educational exceptions and what that looks like, so.
Are we still signing our handbooks, like our parents sort of like? Uh, honestly, I'd-
It's electronic.
If it was required of my child, I probably did it and I'm sorry I've slept since then, so I, I don't remember doing it, but... So, as long as, as the parents are signing, that they've acknowledged this, then when you have a problem, you're gonna be like, would you sign this? You often sign things you don't read, like that would be my question.
Yeah, Michelle, I can actually answer that, having to, just had to double check with Mike. It does come to the parents that read, Mike said electronically. Electronically, I know in the old days it would come on that stack of papers after the first day of school.
Those I remember, that's honestly, I'm just-
Right. But I think, and I think for the administration to be successful, that it, it can't be that drop on a handbook, sign it and move on, because it needs to be realistic. What, ninety-eight percent of the parents are probably not reading that handbook and neither students.
Communications coordinator and, and we, I think we can, we can advertise this and make sure everyone's well aware.
Anything additional? Seven point six, policy four oh five, employment of substitute and outbound professional employees. Are there, is there any questions? Seven point seven, policy five thirty overtime. Are there any questions?
Um, I have a question actually.
Michelle?
When we went over this, this was just for qualified staff. When we went over this, this was just for classified staff, this did not include secretaries, paraprofessionals, anybody like that, right?
It's all classified staff.
So are there any, I don't call it a perk, but it's kind of a perk, are there perks for them? Or is it just like, this is, this is it, you work here, this is what you get, that's it?
I'm not sure what, what you're referring to.
Like, so we're saying that they can't, they don't qualify for any overtime, correct?
They do right now, yes. Every, all classified staff.
And they're classified, so paraprofessional, secretaries are all classified, so this would affect everybody, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because right now, do they get comp time, paraprofessional?
Everybody does. Everybody is eligible.
And they would continue to get comp time if they were to do that?
Well, the way we wrote it in the policy that we talked about that night, it's eight hours, it's equal to their workday.
Okay.
They'll continue to get equal till their, of their workday, they work four hours, they would get four hours. Eight hour employee, they get up to eight hours.
Do we feel that that eight hours is sufficient, or do we want to increase that slightly? And the reason I ask this is I was, I was actually at that meeting, and I was in favor of that eight. My only concern was, you know, we have an employee that uses his eight, and, you know, a couple days later, he has to go for blood work or something, I expect at the end of the day, and now all of a sudden, now he's burning half-day's vacation or whatever it could be, so. So does it make that much of a difference if we're going to eight, to give him another two, to, to allow for that, to give him that, just that, that cushion?
I guess my, I guess my thought on that is if you went two, ten, makes him an odd number for overtime hours. I mean, my thought originally was twelve, only because if you worked eight hours of overtime, it equates to twelve hours, so that's what made more sense to me. Instead of working six hours to get eight hours, it makes more sense in my head, not mine, but that's, I'm, I'm more on the twelve.
I think we've actually settled on eight, because, I'm putting my wrong hand, but the idea is that eight might be equivalent for like four doctor's appointments, you need to leave early to do those things. Comp time is never meant to take days off. That's what I'm saying. Because there are other days, there are other days they're given for, for those other things.
All right, I apologize, I had a question, like after I left that meeting, and Jeremy, I thought some other things. It's, so we initially had talked about eight, is that capped at eight for the year, or is it only eight at any given time?
For any given time, right?
Correct.
For the short, short minimum.
So they could actually, in theory, they could get sixteen, it's about the year, they could, they could get more than eight hours, correct?
The most comp time they can get at one time is eight hours. Anything over eight hours, they'll need to get paid out for in the next payroll.
Okay.
But then they could earn eight again.
Okay.
Such a rolling eight.
Yeah.
It's not a rolling eight, I think commerce would everybody, I should satisfy, any, any discussion of eight, twelve, ten, twelve, right? If it's rolling.
Right. Yeah, what do you mean, over the year? Is it eight or is it?
No, it is rolling.
It's rolling, right. Okay. Is there anything additional on seven seven? Turning up at seven point eight, eight fifteen, responsible use of electronic resources, email, and, uh, Kaseburger School Network. Are there any questions on that? Seven point nine, administrative guidelines, five thirty overtime. Why is that missing place? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I know. Any questions on that? Seven point two, Adams County technical. All right, that's it on the informational items, board committee reports, give me that.
Do not have one, I think.
Jeremy? I do that. Program reports, Dr. Parent, or Dr. Lek?
Thank you. Just quickly, our comprehensive steering committee met on March tenth, we identified the top three essential practices that should be prioritized for our comp plan. The three essential practices are focusing on establishing and maintaining a system for continuous improvement and ensuring organizational coherence, engaging in a two-way communication with stakeholders to establish and sustain shared responsibility for student learning across the district, and to coordinate and monitor, support, align the students and family needs. Then we ask our committee members to choose what we consider look fours that are listed in each essential practice, that they believe would bring us the most transformative, transformational change over the next three years of this plan, this development. Then our leadership team met on three sixteen to review those choices and begin drafting goals for the comp plan. There are additional meetings with our leadership team at the end of this month and in April, and then the next steering committee meeting is May twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Can you repeat your, that number two of your three?
Engage in meaningful two-way communication with stakeholders to establish and sustain shared responsibility for student learning across the district.
So we're making sure that parents are involved?
That's, which, part of the stakeholders, yes.
Okay. So I always feel like I'm stuck between, I don't co-parent with the government, and these parents aren't doing their job, and I got to help pick up the slack. So, thank you.
Mike?
Again, this is one thing, since Jeremy's here, I'm going to put him on the spot. The last time, I just said what an amazing job our girls and wrestlers did going into the, the district finals and into the states, and I just wondered if there's anything you wanted to say about the girls wrestling and, or the wrestling and the girls festival?
It's just all incredible, especially knowing, hopefully you can hear me, especially knowing the girls, and, I mean, guys, swimmers, wrestlers, both female, male, again, the students who are on stage, who are, you know, involved in the school musical, knowing everything that those students do outside of the classroom and do inside the classroom, when you're talking about some of our best basketball players also being some of our very best students at the very top of their class, it's just, it's just incredible. People worry about the future of, of the country, of the world, and as many things as you can shake your head at. I tell people in casual conversations every day, kids are better today than they were when I was growing up, in some ways. They're just exceptional, and the test scores are down, and it's incredibly concerning for all of us, and there's a lot of things to figure out across the board for many schools. We have kids in this community that are just absolutely incredible. So it's, it's hard to mention single teams and single names, but I appreciate you bringing it up.
Hearing nothing additional, counter, our next board meeting, be scheduled for April fourth, seven p.m. here, and the administrative, we have a motion for German. Will it, someone? We stand German.